Carrie, John, great to see you both. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having us.
I am.
Glad to be here.
I'm really looking forward to the conversation. So we don't often do a double guest episode, but you guys bring a unique set of experiences and expertise and I'm excited to dive into board governance, which is not a topic that we cover all the time. But before we get into the thick of it, let's start with some, just some spark notes summaries on who you are and maybe just a little bit about your work and how it ties into this topic. Carrie, why don't you kick us off?
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Daniel. And thanks for making an exception. It's such a pleasure to be here with a longtime friend and colleague, John Troy. So I'm really happy to get to talk about this topic from our complementary perspectives and a long time working together. So I have been working with charter school boards for 15 years, actually, Daniel. So basically, the hot take there is don't sit next to me at a dinner party. This is what I do all day. This is what I care about. I am an educator at heart. My career started first as an education policy analyst and then as an eighth grade social studies teacher. So I come to this work because my career is about improving access to high quality schools. I think that is the issue of our time. I think that is the cornerstone of our democracy. And I think that is, I feel grateful to be working in an area that I think is, is so core to everything going on in the world today. That being said, I work with boards, which means I don't see students a lot. I don't even go into schools a lot. So why do I work with an adult endeavor when my passion is really more kids get to go to good schools? And it is because I think boards really matter for students. The way charter schools are set up, the most innovative and disruptive thing about charter schools is how they're governed. To pull public schools out of districts and out of elected school board control is an incredibly bold way to think about changing the locus of decision-making that affects students in public schools. So that's kind of why I'm in this work. As I said previously, I worked in education policy, eighth grade social studies teacher, and I worked in the very early days of ed reform, which I think we don't even call it anymore. But the idea that nonprofit organizations and people who come from very different backgrounds, business law, HR, finance, actually can contribute experience and expertise to this complex work of running grade schools for all students in our country. So I got involved early on in the ground floor there in terms of rethinking how we deliver public education in this country. For about 12 years, I co-founded and then for about 12 years ran a nonprofit focused on improving the quality of charter school boards in service of improving the quality of charter schools. Two and a half years ago, we merged our nonprofit into a larger nonprofit called Bellwether. So I currently run the governance practice at Bellwether, a national nonprofit strategy and policy advising firm in the education space.
I don't know about the dinner, dinner table comment, Carrie. You don't seem passionate about this at all. I don't, like, I don't know what you're talking about.
Interesting.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you, nobody wants to talk to me anymore, Daniel. I have to thank you for giving me an opportunity to actually talk about my work.
Yeah, we've got the captive audience today. I love it. All right, John, how about you?
Love it, love it. Well, Daniel, thanks for having me. Excited to be here. I've been a fan of the podcast for a while, so excited to be on it and participating. My background, I'm the founder and CEO of Work Together Talent Consulting. We were called Workmonger for most of our life. We just hit our 10 year anniversary. We're a talent services firm in the broader education sector. And so, most of our work falls around serving and equipping and supporting organizations on talent related issues. So that's a lot of search, you know, executive search, recruitment and selection support. We do consulting projects related to talent, helping organizations recruit and retain exceptional talent for their teams in the ed space. We run a job board called Truly Hired. So it's a variety of things in the talent space. But one of the ones I'm most passionate about is board recruitment for charter schools. Carrie mentioned we go way back. She placed me on the board of a charter school in DC. I think I was one of the early folks, because I think it was close to 15 years ago. And so way back in the day, I met then. And so served for almost two years on Paul Public Charter Schools Board in DC, and then spent six years, I now live in Austin, spent six years on the board, four as president of Wayside Schools here in Austin, a charter school here that has a few different campuses, serving about 2,000 kids. So I've seen it on that side. And so Carrie and I have now been working together for a few years where we can leverage our search firm expertise to get out there and find exceptional board members to join charter schools across the country. So it's been a lot of fun. Have enjoyed the partnership. And I know firsthand from being on those two boards, how important it is to have the right people on a board to move the school forward for kids. So excited to chat and share more.
Well, I think that's the perfect transition, because you both sort of emphasize this idea that, you know, the charter school board is not only one of the most unique things about charter school governance, but also one of the things that can actually really move the needle, to your point, John, about the experience for students. So let's get into it. Carrie, I want to start with you. Like, what are some of the most common challenges you see in the market in terms of charter school founders or leaders as it relates to their board? Let's, let's start there.
Well, Daniel, I'm going to start with the reason why you have us both here. Boards are a talent issue, among other things. And we have really overlooked that in the charter sector. And I hear charter school leaders and board members tell me all the time how hard it is to find great people to serve on the board. Because serving on a board is a volunteer activity, and by definition, it's not your full-time thing. Most people who serve on boards also probably have actual full-time jobs, as well as family or life or other commitments. By definition, you're not allowed to be paid to serve in the board of a public charter school. And so this is something that people often fit into their lives versus center in their lives. Yet, the decisions that boards make are incredibly highly consequential. There was a study done a few years ago that found that in the healthcare sector, the nonprofit hospitals that have boards, the more effective those boards are, the board of a nonprofit hospital, the better the hospital is, as measured by patient mortality rate. So in hospitals with better, with better boards, fewer patients die. That's what we're doing here. That's what boards are. In charter schools, there's very little research actually on the effectiveness of charter school boards, which is a whole nother conversation. But I'm telling you, after 15 years of working with the good, the bad, and the ugly of charter school boards, in better boards, in schools with better boards, children get a better education. And that is as high stakes as this endeavor gets. So finding great people who have both the capacity to really be an active and engaged board member, and who bring relevant experience and perspectives that allow them to be valuable thought partners to school leadership, and then keeping those people engaged, that, that talent issue is probably the number one challenge. And that is why I'm so grateful for the partnership that Bellwether and Work Together have. We are the only, this is the only partnership in the country that is trying to bring governance expertise together with search expertise to address the talent challenge of getting enough great people to serve on charter school boards around the country. I'll just say one more thing about that, about the kind of people that make great board members. You know, this is not your check the box board. This is not your pop in now and then, make sure you're there for the key votes. We need people to serve on charter school boards who, you know, this is a hard thing. Like, you care so much about education. You care so much about your community and the children and the families in it. You care so much about the justice that is served when every family in your community has a choice of where to send their children to school, and that people are not assigned and really consigned to the public district school in their neighborhood. So back in the earlier days of charter schools, it is my perception that there was more of that kind of energy. We will fight for the right of families to choose a public school that has a mission that speaks to them, and that is providing a high quality education. It's harder now to find that kind of energy. It's become more political and polarized as many things in our, in our country, et cetera. So this talent issue is really a common challenge. A couple other challenges I want to mention also, because it really impacts board recruiting is in terms of people who can take on and tackle these challenges. Calibrating the right balance between support and oversight, like rocket science kind of hard, but it is actually really hard. It's about relationships, and it is about this calibration. Boards are responsible for doing both, holding the school and the school leader accountable for, for making sure the school is a great school, and also providing all different kinds of support, from thought partnership to fundraising, to guardrails, to backstop, and everything in between. That's hard. Thirdly, there's a big challenge in keeping board members informed enough about the context for education. We don't want everybody on a charter school board to come from the education world. That's not the point. The people who run the school come from the education world. We want people who come from the business world, legal, finance, HR, marketing, people who live in the community, people who sent their children to that school. And it is impossible to be on the board of a public school and not know enough about the context, accountability, funding, politics, advocacy, other choices available to families. How do you measure school quality and leader effectiveness? So finding enough time and the right way to keep board members really informed about that and updated on the context. And then finally, you know what I always say, the biggest obstacle to good governance is time. Again, this is by definition a volunteer endeavor. It is hard for, to find people to serve more to have enough time to go to every board meeting, go to every committee meeting for the committee they're on, attend board trainings to learn how to be a good board member, and very importantly, interact socially, have social events and opportunities to get to know and build relationships with your fellow board members and with the school leaders. It's almost impossible to sit around a table and handle such sensitive, important matters that, as the ones that boards handle, and make great decisions without knowing the people around the table as people. But that takes time, building and sustaining and maintaining relationships take time. So those are some of the common challenges that I see.
Yeah, it's interesting, as you're, as you're describing all the different components of, you know, what it means to be on a charter school board, I'm sitting here thinking, man, I don't think I could fit that into my life right now. I've got young kids, business, you know, job, all, you know, all these different things going on. And, and I am passionate about education. I work in education. And so if it's, you know, if it's challenging, just selfishly thinking about my own life, I can imagine for so many others, it's, it's typical. If you were to, I have one other question on this, and then, John, I want to get your perspective on thinking about this idea of making up the board. If you were to distill it down, like, you use the healthcare example, I'll, I'll just pull from the business world, like, public companies, the old adage is basically the board, their job is they're a fiduciary to shareholders, and they hire and fire the CEO. That's like, the boiled down version of what the board is. And if they allocate capital right, and they, you know, hire and fire the key executive, that's sort of how they're measured. Is there an equivalent in the school space? If you were to drill it down, because I'm thinking about, you know, a conversation maybe you have with someone who might be interested in being on a board, and they're like, cut through the noise for me, Carrie, like, what do I really need to do? How is the school measured? Is it grades? Is it, you know, family satisfaction surveys? How would you try and distill down, like, at the end of the day, the board's responsible for XYZ?
Great question. Thank you. I can distill it down. I think it's four things. I hear you that it's kind of two in the, in the business world.
We'll take four. We'll take four.
Let's do four, which is pretty minimal, considering most board frameworks are like the top 55 things boards need to do.
Yeah, yeah.
And remember, these are public schools. Like, the shareholders here is the first grader, right, who's coming in, and this is their only year ever in first grade, or the family that is really, you know, this, the most important thing in their whole life is their child, and they're giving it to you. So the nature of being on the board of an actual public school serving actual children, there are four things that boards of charter schools need to do and do well. One is accountability. So that's kind of fiduciary plus. That is about being, having fiduciary responsibility. This is about knowing how to measure school success academically, financially, and operationally, and then knowing how to measure that, and measuring it consistently over time. So the board's main job is to hold the school accountable for academic, financial, operational performance, measured against the promises in the charter. You get to open a charter school only because you are granted a charter by the authorizing agency in the public trust, and the board has to know how to measure. Are we doing all those things that we promised to do? Secondly, very relatedly, is support and evaluate the leader. So very, very similarly, hire good leaders, retain good leaders, help good leaders become great leaders, make sure great leaders stay in your organization, provide high quality, professional level evaluation, and fair compensation. A lot of boards think, like, well, we're volunteers. Obviously, we're not the ones to sort of set the compensation or evaluate. The leader of a public charter school reports to that volunteer board, just like the leader of any other nonprofit. It's a, it's a weird, somewhat counterintuitive structure that this professional educator reports to group of volunteers. But that's the accountability. Remember that charter schools are supposed to be more autonomy in return for more accountability. That's the whole charter deal. And so the board's job is to make sure that the school is using its autonomy well and holding the school accountable. The other, other two categories I would add, it is the responsibility of the board to make sure that the board is run well, that you are in compliance and using time well, and that you have strong structures, processes, and practices that befit the level of responsibility and importance of, of the board. So that has to do with authorizer requirements, legal requirements, and good governance practices. Finally, as I alluded to earlier, the fourth responsibility of a charter school board is to be engaged in the sector. You have to understand what's going on. You have to be willing to be an advocate for high quality choice for all parents, as every school in that community goes, goes all schools. So you want to be out there advocating for high quality public school choice throughout the community. You want to be connecting with people from other boards, so that you have some sense of comparative, you can't look at, be looking at your school in a vacuum. You have to know how other schools are doing, what the projections are for student, you know, population that will impact enrollment, how are accountability and funding decisions going to change over time, and how can the school react to that? So being engaged enough in the sector that you can be an effect, you can effectively fulfill those accountability and leader support and evaluation roles.
John, when you think about, you know, you've served on multiple boards, and now you help organizations fill their board, one of the dimensions, talent being just one of the top challenges here. Carrie alluded to the fact that you don't necessarily want a bunch of people from the same walk of life, you know, field of, of professional expertise. Tell us a little bit about what the typical makeup of a strong board looks like, and who, maybe a secondary question there is, who fits the bill for these positions? Because I'm sure people are wondering, you know, whether you're a new school founder, or maybe you're a longtime leader who's wanting to make some changes and knows there, there needs to be, you know, a different dynamic with the board. Like, tell us a little bit about the types of people that fit the bill for these situations, or these positions, rather.
Yeah, great question. And, and I'll try to get pretty specific here. So folks listening might think, hey, am I a good fit or not? So first of all, we're believers that you want diverse perspectives. You want people from different backgrounds, different ways of thinking, a different skill sets, expertise to bring to the table. But there are also some must haves, like, everybody who fits, who joins a board needs to meet kind of a shared level of commitment here. And so what are some of those? So one, you got to be a champion for the school. So you got to connect with the mission of the school that has to, you have to resonate with it. You have to be excited to serve. Two, time. Carrie talked about time. I would say, on average, you know, to join a board, you're probably going to want to have at least eight to 10 hours a month that you can put towards it, so that you can really invest in that. Now, obviously, there are going to be periods of time, you know, maybe the summer's a little lighter, maybe other months are a little heavier. So, but on average, if you're in that eight to 10 spot, you're, then if you have that time to invest, then, then you likely can be a strong board member. So that's another one. You need to be prepared to, as Carrie was saying, you got to, you're going to be an ambassador for the school. You're a representative. So you got to be prepared to tap your network. Some schools have fundraising expectations, not all, but every school is going to have an expectation that you're going to reach out to your network when it serves that particular school, to advocate, to represent, maybe tap your connections to see how they might be able to help in one way or another. So you need to be excited about that, about stepping in in that way. So those are a few. But then I talked about a variety of skill sets as well, like, and Carrie mentioned this, you don't want a board of all educators, because you're leaving valuable skill sets out of the conversation, and you're not going to be able to do your job well. To hit those four things that Carrie just talked about, you can't hit all four if every single person on that board is an educator. You just can't. So you need a variety of skill sets around the table. You need financial acumen, so that you can make sure the school is running financially sound. You do need that academic experience, so that you can ensure you're delivering on the promise that you've made to the children and families in the community. So you need that around the table. Then you think about, like, every school's unique. So what is, what's kind of on the horizon for that school over the next five to 10 years, where you might want to beef up some of the skill set? For example, if you're in a high growth mode, and you know that you're going to be tackling some facilities challenges, you might want a real estate person on the board, for example. And so to me, you want people who meet the must haves, so they have the time, they're prepared to be an advocate, they connect with the mission that applies across the board. And then you want to look at, what are the, the required things that every board needs? Academic experience and finance are examples of that. And then you want to think about what's unique to that particular school, and the mission they're trying to drive, and how you might want some expertise around the table. Perhaps it's legal, perhaps it's facilities, and how do you round that out? And then lastly, and this goes back to that connection to the mission of the school, you want, you want people who understand the community you're serving. So you want people who connect deeply with that community, who understand the opportunities and the challenges that the community faces, and how you can lean into that, because you, you want that perspective around the table as you're making these key decisions. It's going to result in, in a better school. So those are a few things to keep in mind. Last thing I meant to hit on this, years' work experience. I always get this question. There's no hard and fast rule. I would say the average board member probably has at least 10 years' work experience or more. That's where you end up getting. But same thing, you don't want a board of all, you know, C-suite people who are all at that stage of their career. And you also want to want a board of all 25-year-olds who are early in career and going to lean in. Like, you want a mix of experience that comes from having tackled challenges before and bringing that to the table, along with folks who are prepared to dive in and do perhaps the financial spreadsheets on the, on the team. And so you want a variety of skill set and years' experience. But I'd say as a floor, you're probably looking at most or in that, you know, 10 years or above category.
Got it. Okay, so I want to help listeners think about how to assess their board, because, you know, we have a lot of people listen to this podcast who are, you know, CFO, CEO, maybe a director of operations who's aspiring to found a school, lead a school. And I think one of the challenges is people realize there's gaps, or, or, or they don't know. There's sort of two different camps. One is like, I, I know for a fact, we need more financial expertise on the board. Or it's like, I don't know, is my board good? Is my board not good? I think I feel supported. Because maybe there's that heads down perspective you were talking about, Carrie, that you can easily fall into. So I want to, I want to have you guys kind of help us unpack how to assess a board, like, current state, regardless of where the school is in the lifecycle. And then let's talk a little bit about some ways to optimize the board composition, how that ties into, you know, recruiting the right talent, and ultimately, with this lens of like, let's get the board unstuck and help them, you know, help the school leaders achieve the mission of the school. So Carrie, let's, let's go back to you to kick us off here. Where do you start with schools that you work with when it comes to assessing current state? I know this is, this is work you do at a super detailed level. Give us the, the broad strokes on how you think about board assessment.
It's such a good question, because it is a deceptively simple question, but it really is in some ways kind of the beating heart in all of this work. It is very hard to assess board effectiveness. You were talking about, a board is just a legal concept, in, you know, on paper. In practice, a board is a group of people, autonomous adults, who behave in ways like all people that are unpredictable and messy. No individual person has legal standing or authority on their own, but the board together, made up of all those people, has a lot of legal authority and responsibility. It's very subjective to assess board effectiveness. Your, you know, high engagement is my, you know, you're, you know, I'm doing a great job is my minimum floor. You're, I'm a good board member because I ask a lot of questions is my, oh, my gosh, you're micromanaging and getting too much in the weeds. It's very hard, because there's no real rubric. The sector has not done a good job of defining a good board, and then figuring out how to measure it. And so, you know, the only real way to measure a board, practically speaking, is to, is to do a board self-assessment. Ask each person to assess on a set of carefully constructive questions, their own involvement, and then you do, and you aggregate those. That's what I do, all day, every day. My colleagues and I do that. Each person has their own rubric in their head. This may be the best board they've ever been on. It may be the only board they've ever been on. They don't really have anything to measure. This is what excellent looks like. This is what mediocre looks like. We also have, we also have some really difficult and conflicting incentives built in to this model. Oftentimes, a very good, strong school leader frankly doesn't want a highly engaged board. Don't get in my way. I know what I'm doing. I need you to sign off. I need you to raise money. I need you to make some phone calls. But don't get in my way. I know what I'm doing. Conversely, oftentimes, a weak school leader doesn't want the board to be very engaged, because they would like to keep their job. They don't want somebody looking too closely. They are going to figure out how to fix this on their own. Or they know that the board doesn't really have that context to comparatively, to measure the performance of the school comparatively. So there's not a lot of incentives for school leaders. That being said, a lot of very strong school leaders that I know really, really want a strong board. They're looking for thought partnership. They're looking for an accountability partner. So, all of which is to say, I do think board assessment is really important. I think that it should not be something that needs to be created by every school on its own. That's what, that's what I mean when I say that the charter sector, for the most part, in my perspective, has overdialed on autonomy and underdialed on accountability. If we let each LEA decide for itself what a good board looks like, that doesn't work. That doesn't work. So I like to see whether it's the authorizer, or a local funder, or intermediary, or education champion, or even a state charter association, defined for that state, or that city. This is what a good board looks like in this city, and this is how we are all going to agree to measure it. The funder, the authorizer, the membership association, we're all going to agree that this is what it looks like to measure it, and come up with a good, solid, place-specific, tailored survey that we can then use. I do think it's helpful to have an outside person come in and do that assessment. It's hard for boards or leaders to do that, to do that. Start every engagement that we have with the board with that board assessment. Really, we just, we describe it as holding up a mirror. We're going to help you look in the mirror and see where, what are the strengths of this board, according to this common definition that we've all agreed on. And here's where you have opportunities for improvement. One thing that I feel more and more strongly about in my work, and one of the big benefits of doing this governance work within, within Bellwether, which does so much, Bellwether does so much work to help education organizations in so many ways, with strategy, talent strategy, academic improvement, instructional coaching, strategic planning, organizational sustainability. I actually, more and more think, a board self-assessment really needs to be done in tandem with a school self-assessment. Here at Bellwether, we call that our school excellence framework, or a school health assessment. You know what? Board, it's very hard to say in a, like, in a vacuum, if this is a good board. What end? Is this a good school? Does the school need to get better? Where are the schools areas? So a really powerful way to think about governance is, the board gets somebody to come in and do a really high quality, current state assessment of the organization, of the school, or the network of schools, so that the board is aware, here's where we're strong, here's where we need to improve. That then becomes the dashboard that the board uses to monitor academic, operational, and financial performance and health of the school. And now the board is assessing its own performance in, are we helping the school get better in the ways that make a difference for students and that fulfill the promises of the charter?
John, having served on boards, I'm curious, you know, from your experience, did you find it challenging to self-assess or identify some of the blind spots? You know, Carrie, Carrie gave the, this idea of like, holding up a mirror is the goal. If an outside organization is helping you do this, they're holding up a mirror. Do you feel like it does become a bit subjective in terms of when you're a, an actual board member thinking about, hey, are we doing a good job? Like, tell us a little bit about your experience in this context.
Yeah. So one, I think a lot of boards are not self-assessing. They're, they're not doing this. They're, and, and it's a problem. And you have to, you have to evaluate how you're doing. That's where I think having a key rubric, where you're actually going through, and you're making sure you're looking at the various responsibilities, helps provide structure. Because in the absence of that, you're like, I, I think we're doing a good job. You know, there are some things that are black and white. Like, if you're not managing the finances, the state's going to make that clear, and you're going to pay the consequences. So some of those things are black and white. Other things live in this mushy gray, where you're like, are we doing well? Are we not? And a rubric helps shine a spotlight on it. I do think sometimes it is useful to have somebody outside come in, because they, they do a lot, you know, they do a lot of assessments, they shine that mirror up, they help guide you through it, when you, if you're not being real with yourself, and you're just kind of being a little too generous, they can kind of call you out a little bit on that, and provide that, some of that accountability. So I have seen it go better when, when you have somebody help guide you through that assessment process. And so I think that's critical. I also think, in order to assess clearly, you got to have clear goals, and you have to know what everybody's accountable for at the start of the year, so that you can assess how you actually did against them at the end of the year. And if you're not, if you're not doing that, then, you know, if everybody's not Uh, and if you're not, if you're not doing that, then, you know, if everybody's not rowing in the same direction, what's the point of the assessment? You need to know what your, what your goals are for in the first place and then assess against those and know what your responsibilities are in the first place and assess against those. And I think a lot of schools are flying a little blind in that area and need, need some structure in my experience.
What do these assessments carry, you know, at the end of an assessment? Like what are the types of conversations you're having? You don't, you don't have to give us all the different buckets that you're assessing on. But what it, like, what does it look like for you to come to a board and say, hey, here's what we found? What are some of the, the things you're identifying as strengths and weaknesses? Is it always the same framework or are you trying to contextualize it depending on the state you're in? I know you mentioned different organizations have their own sort of rubrics for board efficacy. Tell us a little bit about what the assessment should produce, I guess, is the question.
Yep. Let me answer that. And then I want to build on a couple of things that John said, which are related to that question. The most common things that boards don't, aren't doing very well, that most boards need help with. Listen, and as I always say, there are only two kinds of boards, those that are willing to get better and those that aren't. I mean, there is no perfect board. All boards need to get better. And in my experience, that's it. There are two kinds of boards. So I really appreciate all the boards that look for help and want to know how they can get better. The most common things I see over and over, boards aren't doing a very good job evaluating that head of the school. It's really hard to do well. Boards need help with that. Number two, lots of boards are not, don't really have an effective succession plan for, for if the leader ended up leaving an emergency or even not an emergency. So succession planning, uh, for the leadership and succession planning for the board chair. So succession, succession planning at both levels. The other thing, I, I think this issue of, as John said, you have to have to know what the goals are, both in terms of like for the school's health and performance and improvement. And then you have to be looking at the right data to measure those goals. I mean, governance is not like a vibe thing. It is a goal-driven, data-driven enterprise. We are, we are too loose in most boards. And so tightening that accountability functioning is incredibly, incredibly important. It's very hard. You know what? A word that we don't talk about enough when we talk about boards is, is courage. It's hard to measure courage. I wish I could in a board assessment, figure out, is this a courageous board or not? It is hard to look at that school leader who you know is working so hard, cares so much. Is there putting their blood, sweat and tears into the school and yet children are not learning? Too many children are not coming to school. Teacher turnover is too high, teacher effectiveness is too low, but that is the job of the board. We in our sector, I want to pick up on something John said about, also about, um, if, if you're not doing a good job on safe financial oversight, the state or the authorizer will let you know. You know what? True. But we default too much to authorizers in terms of accountability. Authorizing is by definition a lagging kind of accountability. You wait five years, 10 years, in DC, 15 years is the window for, uh, you get to hold your charter for 15 years. There are reviews in between. The whole point, the big value, the big opportunity in, in school level or network level governance is leading accountability, not lagging accountability. Boards have proximity and have access to the information as you go along, not sitting back and waiting to see how it happened, you know, what happened at the end of the year or at the end of the five-year charter or whatever. So I think that board effectiveness is measured in our boards living up to that opportunity to be measuring leading indicators, know what those goals are and with very clear eyes, a really, you know, strong backbone and a lot of courage, monitor progress towards those goals and be willing to say when things are off track academically, financially, operationally, and then lean into support. Again, it's hard to measure and it's hard to know how to do that. So I think getting, getting all that balance, getting that balance right in terms of figuring out how to, how to exercise oversight and accountability, knowing how to evaluate the leader, planning for succession. You know, honestly, to get a little more tactical, committee structure is a big common issue that I find in board self-assessments. It's very hard to get a high-functioning committee structure so that each committee is really handling a set of that data in more depth and then figures out how to bring the whole board in at the appropriate level. That's a hard thing for boards to get right. And that, that pops up a lot in board self-assessments, that the committee structure maybe exists really only on paper or the same few people are in every committees. And we can't figure out the balance between reporting and discussion. Those are some of the things I see pop up a lot in board assessments.
I want to take us back to sort of where we started the conversation around talent ultimately being one of the most critical issues in building these really high-quality volunteer unpaid, mission-driven boards. And I would imagine as part of an assessment, assessing the, the skillset of the board to say, hey, it seems like we need to really improve our fill-in-the-blank financial oversight or our, you know, our academic accountability. And we just maybe don't have the right group here on the board. Or maybe we're missing board members and like, we've been recruiting and we can't get anyone to join the board. You know, there's all sorts of different, different situations. How does a board know that it's time to initiate change in terms of the actual composition? And then what's the process to go find new people? Carrie, maybe start with you and then John, maybe talk a little bit about how you guys think about going out and finding people who could be the right fit for a board.
Um, I'll, I'll give you a sort of a framework answer and then John can give you the tactical answer. Every board needs to have a board composition matrix. I'm a very big believer in a governance committee. The governance committee's job is to sort of run the board. You need a board composition matrix that you keep very up to date and it needs to be matched against the goals of the school. So if you really needed some real estate and facilities financing people on the board because you needed to secure a permanent facility, but now you have a permanent facility, you don't need to add any more real estate, uh, you know, people or facilities financing experts. You need something else for the next chapter. So boards need to be really clear about aligning board composition with the goals for the next one to three years. I like for boards to think about a three-year recruiting arc. What are, what, what do you need on this board to get the school where it needs to go in terms of the goals right now? And then looking ahead to the future. Charter school board seats are not, this is not the Supreme Court. These are not lifetime appointments. You need to have term limits and you need to have very clear eyes about when you renew people's terms and not renew the terms of people who either are disengaged or, or disruptive or whatever, but also might be wonderful, but the thing, but the ways that they can contribute to the board, we don't need anymore. We don't need going forward. The, uh, composition of a board needs to be dynamic and evolve as the needs of the organization and the goals of the organization evolve.
And then to build on that, coming out of that process, you will have a sense of who you need to add. But what we have found is sometimes boards are out there and they're just like, I need some new board members. That's why you gotta go through, have that board composition matrix, because you need to distill that. You need to go through the process Carrie talked about. And then when you're ready to recruit, we take our search expertise and apply it here. So you don't just say, hey, I need a finance person. Okay, let's craft the profile of that finance person. Is this a more junior person who we think can spend hours in a spreadsheet? And they're going to be really, you know, dotting the i's, crossing the t's, carrying the one, like all that kind of thing? Or is this more of a strategic financial leader with a lot of more expertise? Uh, are you, you know, what's the current composition of the board? You know, how, you know, we will look at, you know, various factors about, you know, how connected to the community are folks right now? Do we need to, has that gotten out of whack? Do we need to bring in some people who are more connected? You look at other aspects as well, and you really craft that profile. So you basically say, okay, I want a strategic leader who's been C-level at a nonprofit before, who can bring that expertise, who has at least 15 to 20 years' work experience, who, uh, lives in this area, et cetera. And you craft that profile very specific. And then we get out there and we, and we headhunt for it. We start, uh, we'll go on LinkedIn, we'll go in on other sources, we'll tap our networks. You reach out to people and say, who do you know? And you start to build out a list of people who align with that profile. And then you can reach out to them and hopefully build interest. And so we encourage people to get much more specific on crafting a comprehensive profile of that ideal person. Not just, I need a finance person.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone with a heartbeat and, and can read a P and L, maybe not the best.
Warm body recruiting. We do not do warm body recruiting. Exactly.
All right. Well, Carrie and John, I feel like we're just scratching the surface. We might need to do a part two, uh, but all of us have, have to, uh, run off to our, our day jobs. Thank you both for coming on and, and sharing more about your work and this super important topic. We always end each episode with where can people find you and learn more about your organizations? Uh, where should we send folks in the show notes?
You can email me directly at carrie.urban@bellwether.org. You can check out bellwether.org. We have a governance page on our website that has lots of free tools and templates. But I would love to hear from any of your listeners, Daniel, who want to join a board, who want to find more people for their board, and especially who want to learn how to be the best possible board member to make sure that every public charter school in this country is a school that we would send our kids to, a school that is providing an excellent education where kids can thrive and learn and connect and set up a wonderful future.
And I'd love to connect as well, worktogethertalent.com. You can email me at, uh, John, that's J O H N, at worktogethertalent.com as well. Would love to connect and support in any way we can. So thank you very much for having us, Daniel. Really enjoyed it.
Can't wait for part two, Daniel. Hit us up.
Let's do it. Let's do it. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for listening to Charter School Insider. This show is brought to you by BuyQ, the group purchasing organization specifically for charter schools. Want to learn how to maximize your school's purchasing power? Join together with thousands of other charter schools by visiting buyq.org/signup. BuyQ's purchasing program is free and has no obligations or commitments required. If you enjoyed today's episode, do us a favor and subscribe on your podcast listening platform of choice. If you have a question or feedback for us, we'd love to hear from you. Send us an email at podcast@buyq.org. Thanks, and we hope you'll tune in for the next one.